Okay, we'll get started with our meeting this afternoon. So, the first item on here is Commissioners Discussion. The purpose is a county board interview process. So, I am going to step out of this one right off the bat. Who would like to start the conversation on it?
I'll be happy to start it. Reading through the resolution. Sorry, can you find it again? Did you grab it?
No, I got it.
Yeah, the second page.
Okay. Reading through the resolution, it basically says that the timeframe that we can appoint people, what it takes, that no member may serve more than two consecutive terms or two and a partial term. But it also says down there that the appointments shall be made by the Board due to consideration of candidates at a public meeting. That doesn't mean that we can't go through and have interviews and everything else without the full Board. That just means that, like we've done in the past, our mind is on. Like we've done in the past, once we put them on the consent agenda and vote on them, that is a public meeting and is publicly confirmed at that point in time. So, there is nothing wrong with bringing things forward, having a limited number of Commissioners that actually do the interviews, and those Commissioners present their recommendations at that point in time. But it will still have to be on a consent agenda like we had in the past for those to be confirmed.
Commissioner Nicholas.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Resolution 2306 is from 2006. I was not aware of it before it was provided to us, what was it, last week, I think, after the issue came up. I think that there's been substantial compliance with it for the Board appointments that have been made the last year and two months that I've been on the Board. My reading of it, I guess, is a little bit different than Commissioner North's. I see that it applies to all Boards, statutory Boards and other Boards. It does specifically mention planning and zoning. Paragraph four states that appointments shall be made, so it's mandatory language, by the Board after due consideration of the candidates at a public meeting. Couple thoughts, I guess, trying to understand it from the clear language. You know, first of all, there's that mandatory language. Secondly, appointments should be made by the Board, not a committee or a, you know, task force or some constituent, you know, appointed group. I think that means all five of us. It also says after due consideration. I think due consideration, from a legal perspective, might indicate that we actually look at the resumes of the candidates and maybe we interview them. It doesn't require that, maybe we don't. But it does require that the Board, that's the five of us, give due consideration of the candidates at a public meeting. And so, it seems to me that putting those words together requires the five of us to review interested and, I guess, qualified applicants, although it doesn't say that they have to be qualified, but that that has to be done at a public meeting. So, I think it's pretty clear in terms of the procedure. Now, we can make modifications to this resolution, and it indicates that we can do that, but until, unless and until we do, I think that our procedure should be consistent with what we see here in paragraph four.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lawrence.
I tend to agree with what Mr. Nicholas said. I think you have to read the whole document, which is, can be changed at any time. I mean, the Board of County Commissioners, this is paragraph eight, "The Board of County Commissioners reserves the right to amend this resolution at any time, and a discretion to is necessary to conduct county business, to suspend the application of these rules in particular instances." The fact is, these rules aren't even necessary because we're bound by the statutory law concerning our powers, and they're pretty broad when it comes to this type of thing. It does say in paragraph seven, and you have to kind of absorb that a little bit, but it says, "All duly appointed Board members shall act in a fiduciary capacity and shall not engage in any activities that constitute a conflict of interest, unless such conflict is disclosed to and is ratified by the entire Board. Board member positions that require bonding shall, as soon as practical, provide sufficient information for the Board to obtain necessary bonding approvals." What would a conflict of interest be? I can think of a lot of instances, but what lawyers do, if they're smart, and they don't want to get in trouble with the Bark Council, is, is that it's not only the impropriety, it's an appearance of impropriety that we are cautioned about, starting in law school. If it doesn't look right or smell right, it might not be illegal, but you better be really careful, because you should avoid the appearance of impropriety. So, I haven't been on many of these. I've been on two of these Boards where we select somebody. One of them, we did have a public meeting, and there was a vote right afterwards. There was, was a former Commissioner who probably was the most knowledgeable one to get the job, and there was also the head of the Board there, and the head of that Board didn't say a word the entire time. That was my first experience with listening to all the candidates and deciding who should be the Board member. So, my first experience, to just sum it up, was the guy that ran the, that ran the agency said nothing, and I thought that was probably appropriate, because I didn't think that the heads of the agencies should be manipulating who gets on their Boards. I think that that's up to the Commissioners entirely, and that they should be promoting people who advance the interests of the county and the public that elects us here. So, never even occurred to me. So, this last one was, I thought, similar to it, and we advanced the two people we thought that had no outside interests or no conflicts of interest, and had been on there before, and they're both good people, honest people, at least from what I'm told, and so that's been what's advanced. And then, so when I read this resolution, I think it does require the County Commissioners, as it did in these other ones, to put it on the agenda, and the Commissioners vote whether... Because I could see where you might have some information about somebody, or there was just somebody that the majority of the Commissioners didn't want on there for some reason. Well, that's the power they've been given by the Wyoming State statute, to deal with that. So, I just don't, I don't see that as the real issue here, anyway. I don't see this resolution as, I think it's fine, fine resolution. If we don't like it, we can change it. I think there's other issues at play, and I don't think it has much to do with the procedure by which all of this stuff happens, because it ultimately comes down to the Board of County Commissioners to make the decision. And if they see fit that they don't want what's been advanced to them, then they have a right to vote the way they want to vote. That's the power given to them. Then there's also the other thought, that there's so much to do in this county, that there's five Commissioners, and they should all be equally delving into the problems of the Commission, so that it won't be a burden just on one or two or three people. And I think as a team, I've always found that teams, when they finally get going as a team, they win all the games. So, that's my just general philosophy.
Commissioner Melon.
Language is important, so listen to what I say. I believe, I agree mainly with Dallas on that. I think, however, I got a little lost.
Well, I'll be happy to explain it.
No, 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 no. I think we need to follow the policy, or the resolution as it states. These positions are important to the county, and we should take them serious and take their appropriate steps. Being on committees or on the Commission where we did several different styles of selecting people, I believe I, I think that the best one, the most fair, the most transparent, is to have all five of us talk to the person and do an interview if necessary, but at least all of us discuss it, look at their resumes. Now, that's not saying maybe we don't have, say, a select committee where they do the interviews and then report back to us, but, you know, in essence, we do affirm them, all five of us, through the, whether they're put on the consent agenda or whatever, we do affirm them. But we haven't, some of us haven't talked to them in the past. We don't know who's going where or what, and is it necessary for each and every one? Maybe not, maybe it is. I do differ, in my opinion, as far as from Dallas, that Commissioner Laird, that we shouldn't take into any evidence or taking any opinion from the Board, that the manager of the Board or the Director, Manager of the Department, those people will be working hand in hand with our selectee, and so there needs to be a good working relationship there if... So, I do believe there should be some input from either the Board, the Director, or whoever that will be working with it, other Board members, that it's valid to listen to those people and hear what they're saying as well. It doesn't do the Board any justice to put on somebody that won't work with the Board or won't work with the Director, or has a cross that they're wanting to burn in front of the Director's house or whatever, you know? If they've got a burning desire of, this is a one topic, this is all I care about, and I don't care about the rest of the county, then that's probably not the selectee that we need. We need some, we need people that can look at and focus at the entire county, and at times, we've had those people. They're a one-issue person on a Board, and we need to keep and make sure, and all five of us be comfortable, that that person is the appropriate person for that Board. And so, how we get from them giving us their application to all of us taking a look at them, whether we have a interview committee or what we do to move the process forward, that's minutia in the details, but in the end, all five of us need to have a, have a look at the person that's being selected, whether it's resume, and the interview, whatever it takes, but we do need to, all five of us need to be comfortable with the people.
Commissioner North.
Mr. Chairman, I just, I just wanted, oh, excuse me, excuse me.
Commissioner Melon, you know as well as I do that in the past, there have been several times that we've appointed people to Boards without looking at resumes, without even talking to the people prior to that point, and what we've done is, is we've gone under recommendation of a single Commissioner saying, "I know this person, and I'll vouch for him." Instead of that, this time around, for this particular Board, we had two Commissioners that did the interviews for the entire group that was there, and we asked everybody the same questions, and those are the people that we presented after a fair and reasonable interview process that I will defend, and we have all the questions, we have all the answers that they gave us, and everything else. That is no different to me than going through, actually, that's a better process than going through and saying, "Hey, do you know this guy? Do any of you guys know this guy?", and voting on that one person, because one person knows him. And that's why we have done it multiple times over the last two and a half years, and I've seen that happen even before that, in work sessions before I was on the Commission. It's not something that's abnormal. We're still, we're still supporting that, but bottom line is, we often have Boards or interview Boards where we only have one or two Commissioners on those Boards, and yet we take that recommendation, and the rest of the Commission doesn't even have an opportunity to vote on those a lot of times. This is something that, when we set up, we send it out to everybody, we were, we were asked to be on that interview Board, Dallas and I were, we interviewed every one of those guys. At the end of the day, we came to the conclusion that these are the people that we're recommending for these positions. Two of these positions that were open, there was only two candidates for them. That was it. And then, one of the positions, we actually had four candidates for it. I believe we picked the very best person for that position. And then the other one, we actually had three candidates for it, and after the interview process, I believe that we picked the right person for that position also.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Laird.
I think we should definitely follow the resolution. And Jim, I agree with what you said, that you didn't think, because I agree, that we should get information from our Department Heads concerning this, and I don't think they should be the defining vote. They don't have the authority for the defining vote, that's obvious from the resolution and the Wyoming statute, but to get information, and I went out and sought information on this particular deal, I went and watched the meeting to see how the people were doing. And then I checked one of the other candidates out and thought he was a great guy. The two people that had been on there, this was their second term, and I thought, from what I could see, they'd done a pretty good job, and they really wanted it, they had some compassion about it, and I don't think they're obstructionist in any view, and so that was how I made my determination. But that isn't really what's important to me, because the overall Board of the Commissioners have the right to vote and prove who they want. What I would suggest is, is that going forward, at any new interview, we have a set of rules that we work with the County Attorney about, that we follow precisely, but to me, this isn't, this isn't about defending anything. I agree with following the rules and the law, period. And if the Commission sees fit not to accept the two people that we put forward, then so be it. I would want to know the reason for that, and that's the part that makes me not completely comfortable with this whole amount of time we're giving this thing, because I don't think it's, deserves all this time. It's pretty, people who really want these jobs and come forward, have been on them, they have a right to be on their two years if we so choose. I look at that, and that's how I decided the issue.
Well, we'll move on to the next item. It is the Commissioners' Discussion for Right-to-Life Acknowledgement Resolution. Commissioner Melon, I think this was your item.
Yeah, so, I asked this to be put on, so, we as Commission can discuss this. We had quite a few people in here talking about it. It's obviously a concern to some of the community, and I think it, it was during public comments, so we didn't really, you know, kind of got ambushed by it. I didn't know I was coming in or anything like that, so... But it seems to be a concern, and potentially a misunderstanding on some people's part of what we can do, so I thought we would maybe bring it forward, have a little discussion, make people aware of what we can do as Commissioners and what we can't, and move forward from Do you want me to continue, or?
Continue on.
All righty then. So, that was the thought process behind getting it on the agenda. This is a very, it's a moral issue, it's a political issue. We heard from one set of the community that, and for the most part, a lot of Wyoming, Natchona County is conservative, is Christian, but there are other parts of the community that aren't, and we didn't hear from them. They're citizens and voters, just like we are, everybody else is, and we're to represent them as well as everybody else. So, it comes down to almost a personal level, personal choice, as far as when you vote, not only as long as it fits within the guidance of the law. If we chose to pick up a resolution, I don't think we've actually decided to have a resolution of it in support of or not, but if we did decide to pick up a resolution on this, it would, it would be something that we need to discuss as a body, whether we wanted to or not. The resolution, if we do have, put one forward, would be a, basically, a letter of support for the state to actually do something, one way or the other, or to get the judicial system to move one way or the other. There is nothing legally we can do to shut anything down, to start anything up, to do anything. It would just be a matter of us, on our vote, whether we supported that resolution, however the wording is, and that's it. It wouldn't go past that. It wouldn't be legally binding, per se, as far as making anybody do anything. So, we need to make sure that people are aware, our abilities are severely limited on something such as this. So, with that in mind, I'll pass it on to anybody else. I've got some more comments, but I'd like to hear from anybody else that has anything.
Commissioner North.
This is a subject that I have my own personal beliefs about, but we are regulated very extensively by statute, like Commissioner Melon said. Right now, we don't have the ability within the county to regulate what kind of businesses come and go, if it's, if it's appropriate and it's state, if it's not something that the state regulates against that. Now, that being said, that does not mean that we agree with every type of business that comes into town. We don't support every type of business that comes into town, but as far as the Commission goes, we are strictly regulated by what statutes are. Now, last year, the legislators passed several different bills, and, you know, I think that, I think they're the ones that need to continue to work on that. We're going to see what happens when we, when this goes through the court system and it goes to the Supreme Court. I have a feeling that this is going to go a lot harder than just the state Supreme Court, because of, it's a strong issue on both sides. But last year, the Supreme Court said that this is the state's rights to regulate it. That means that it is the state's right to do this. That doesn't mean that abortion is going to be banned anywhere, you know, nationally, but it does mean that the states have that right to make those decisions, and that comes from our legislators, not locally. That's not something that we have the authority to do. Now, that doesn't mean that we support it, and I'm a strong believer in human life. I always have been, and I always will be, but there's a lot of things that our hands are tied on, and this is one of them, as far as what we can legally do, but I do support the people that are, that are against abortion. I personally don't agree with it. I think there's other options that are out there, but I know that it's a very passionate issue, and it has been since the early 70s. I mean, we know that. For those of us that are a little older, that have grown up with that, we've seen that, we've seen both sides of it over the years, and seen how bad it did get. I mean, back in the 70s, there was a lot of, a lot of firebombings and everything else that went on at different things. There was a lot of local terrorist activities, and I don't support that in any way or force, no way at all. That's not the way to respond to things. We need to do it legally, and we need to make sure that we appropriately take the actions, and right now, it's in the court system. I don't believe in judicial legislation. I will say that over and over again. We've seen it too much, and I've seen too many places where they shop around for the specific judge that they know will vote for them on their side, and that's on several issues. You look at the grizzly bear issues and taking that, or the wolves, and trying to get that off the endangered species list, and they took it to an activist judge in Montana because they knew that they would vote with them. So, I don't agree with judicial legislation at all, in any form or fashion. I think that's something that the states have the right to do, and that's where that needs to stay, is, that's the reason why we have three branches of government. So, I do think that this is something that we, we should discuss as a full Commission. I'm not sure what, what the answer's going to be, or where we're going to go with that at this point in time.
Here's a little powerful statement that I always refer to when I am a little teeny bit confused. It's called the Declaration of Independence. "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all human beings are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, that to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed." That's a very powerful statement. We get whatever we do, whatever rights we deal with, are given to us by the consent of the governed by voting for us. So, I read that back in law school, and I, I really turned that over in my brain, and I thought, how smart those guys were back in the day. They were all very spiritual men, with different times, because instead of, I put in human beings instead of men, because we're all human beings. And I don't, being a man, sometimes I feel unqualified to even talk about this subject in many ways, but I do understand the rights of people. So, I, as a lawyer, took an oath 53 years ago, that said I would support the laws of the state of Wyoming, and the legislature of the state of Wyoming passed some laws. They passed a lot of laws that I haven't liked, or that I've really liked, or they didn't pass some laws that I really liked, that didn't even make it out of a committee. But this law was, was passed in a wonderful, great state of Wyoming, and now it's under judicial scrutiny, which also is given to our judges by the Constitution of Wyoming, and I'm bound by that. I took an oath to uphold all of those laws and the rules of court. I was... of those laws and the rules of court. I was given the right to challenge them, if I wanted to, or if I thought they needed challenging, and you have to have a pretty good reason for that. And, so I think the Supreme Court will probably rule on this particular matter, maybe this year, hopefully, and I'll know then what legal authority I have with respect to these laws. I have a moral authority, but my position here on this commission is a legal authority. But, I do believe that a resolution can be worded to support the liberty and justice of human beings. And, I don't, as a commissioner, wanna jump in the middle of something while it's currently heatedly being discussed down at that Supreme Court, 'cause you can be embarrassed. You can take action, and then the Supreme Court rules against your, what you thought was right, and, and then you're usurping their powers and causing more dissension among our people. Truthfully, I think preserving human life is worth all of that, because I, I am not going to make a political decision here, because I'm not gonna run again, and so whether somebody votes for me or doesn't vote for me, isn't gonna influence what I do here. There is, there hasn't been a resolution set forth in a public meeting where I can vote on it either. So, I'm not gonna conjecture or hypothesize anything other than in letting people know that I have never been for the death penalty, although I've been in four death penalty cases as a lawyer. Nobody got the death penalty, though. And, I believe in human rights and human life, and I'm gonna leave it at that for right now.
Okay. Am I hearing that we're gonna wait and see where the state goes with this Supreme Court goes before we move any further? Okay. We will move on. We have roundtable discussion with the commissioners, and, yeah, we got about 15 minutes left for that. So, Commissioner Mellon, do you have anything you need to bring up?
Yeah, so, I gotta, been talking to the fair, referenced the fairgrounds, the grandstands, bathroom costs. He has spoken with contractor, and it, it is possible to do it, obviously, in two sections and, and whatnot. It will increase the cost, though, more likely, because of waiting another year, or just how things are going, it's just increasing thing, increasing everything. So, but it, it can be done in two years, through a little planning, and so for the first year, it'd probably be about $200,000, and then the second year would be about the same, if not a little bit more than $200,000. That's all I got.
Commissioner Nick Leason.
Hey, Mr. Chairman. A couple things. I think the most pressing issue is, and the most time-sensitive issue, is some health department conversation that we're gonna have here, scheduled at 3:30, so we'll, I'll be involved with, with that discussion. I continue to hear from people in the healthcare, our local healthcare providers, doctors, nurses, people who have retired or moved on. We continue to have a problem. We continue to have what I would call an exodus of healthcare providers, and I think the quality of our healthcare in this community is going down, and has gone down substantially in the last 12 months. I think that we do need to push on making the Memorial Hospital Board active. I, I think that we can potentially make some, some progress in that respect, and I think that there needs to be a discussion, and I'm working on some ideas on trying to have a productive discussion about the current state of healthcare, and where we can, how we can improve it. But, we are losing specialties and subspecialties, and people are having to wait six months for important non-elective procedures, because there's only, for example, one doctor in town that still provides those services. We're having other practices and physicians move out of town, and, and I think that we need to get Banner involved in the conversation. And, so, anyway, I, I wanna push that. Mr. Chairman, I wanted to go back, 'cause I'm not clear, and I, I don't wanna open up a can of worms, but we had the county board interview process first on the agenda with no action taken, but I think that for the, for the betterment of our, you know, county, we need to decide if we're gonna start interviews again, or if we're gonna just do nothing for two more weeks. And, so I didn't know if the other commissioners, or you, Mr. Chairman, wanted to weigh in on, on steps forward there. Finally, I had an interesting conversation with a, an outfit that may be interested in actual live horse racing here in the county, and I think there might be some conversations in the future, in the near future, to talk, to talk through, to see if, if that could be a possibility again. I don't have anything else, but thanks for the time.
Anybody wanna weigh in real quick on the interview process itself that took place?
Could I weigh in on another subject? The, I, I agree with Peter on this issue concerning healthcare. I think that's, really has our community in some amount of turmoil. I've met with numerous doctors and, and retired doctors, and they're all concerned, and I don't know what the answer is to that. Some of them have said, "Well, why don't you guys buy the hospital back?" And, I don't think that's in the cards at all. I don't, you know, people do have a right to run their business the way they wanna run their business, but I think there is some little teeny bit of oversight we may have, if we have the county attorney research that contract. I think there's something in there about oversight, whether it's expired or not, I'm not sure, but it's definitely, for our people, something we should look into. The, the issue that you wanted me to comment on, I think I've already commented on it. I think we should just follow the rule, and I think we should follow what's been done up to this point, and then follow the rule strictly from here on. Now, if there's some issue about our two selections, and it gets overridden by the commission, that's the way life is. But, I hope it's for the right reasons, and all of that, because I do know there were some differences of opinion on the facts of this matter, and some of the difference arose from people who weren't at the meeting. So, I think Mr. North and I explained what happened. I think it was perfectly honorable meeting. Everybody was heard, everybody expressed their opinions, and there's a turmoil over it, which surprised me in some extent, it didn't, because of other things that I've heard, but I'd like to get on with the county's business.
As far as the interviews go, I agree with Dallas. I think we ought to accept what we've presented, have the board vote on that, and put them on the consent agenda, and get that taken care of and move forward. If we wanna change things in the future, then we can outline and be very more, be more specific about how we do it at that point in time. But, I believe that everything that was done follows up to this point. Now, it's at the point where the commission votes on these individuals as a group, just like we have every other time, by putting those names on the consent agenda and moving forward at that point. On another issue completely different, for those of you who aren't aware, the marina out at Alkova burned down yesterday morning. The call actually came in at 5:39, and they did get it suppressed, and I, I thank the good Lord for all the moisture that we've had, because it didn't burn all the trees and everything else. It could've been a whole lot worse out there than it, than it was. It's a shame to lose the marina out there, but hopefully, we can get everything moving forward and get that taken care of, and we can get something out there rebuilt, and hopefully, a timely matter, not long-term, but anytime you're dealing with the government, with the Bureau of Reclamation, it's gonna be a little bit slower. I'll have to go back and look. I know that, that entire plan has been approved by the Bureau of Reclamation in the past for the marina, and I'm hoping that they will continually accept that, because it is a plan that was already accepted by them, and then move forward with that, instead of having to start the process all over again.
The only thing I'll add to the interviews themselves, I did receive some information prior to this meeting, like, maybe three minutes prior to this meeting, that I will provide to everybody as soon as this is done, so you can use, utilize that information the way you will, in making your decision, whether you move forward on that or not. And, I agree with Dave, you should, we will put it on the consent agenda. You can review the information provided to you and make your decision from there. Dave and I attended a opioid settlement, when was that, Thursday?
Yeah.
Yeah. Opioid settlement, meeting with the city, was, you know, we're still planning on, the city was hoping we'd still have a match with them in moving forward on some sort of a treatment facility, not building a facility, just simply standing up a treatment facility itself, as far as detox, and obviously, there's certain things that needs to be spent on, so, but that was really our first big meeting that we've had, so, as that progresses, we'll bring more information back to you. And, last week, I would eventually like to have a discussion on this sooner than later, but last week, I, I guess I had the fortune of tagging along with the mayor into a local hotel here that has been 100% destroyed on the inside. He was already, had issues going on with it, but the homeless population that we keep talking about within the city, clearly, walking through that hotel, the destruction that's taken place over there.
Which one is it?
I'm not gonna go into which one it is, but the destruction that's taken place inside that hotel, and going through there, there were items that were found that were, clearly had been stolen from other individuals within the city, that may or may not have even reported that their items had been stolen. But, I'm not picking on the homeless community, but they were watched going in and out of there. So, I know it's from the homeless community, and we've had these problems down by the library, downtown. This is the first time, I spent 26 years in law enforcement here, and this is the first time that I've gone downtown and seen the amount of homeless people that we have down there. And, this is, it's a problem nationwide, because there's a lot of people that are being bused to other communities, and we are one of those communities that are receiving several people. So, and we're not gonna turn them away and tell them they can't come here, we can't do that. But, what I would like to see happen is continued conversations with the city, with the director of the rescue mission, and everybody put their heads together, and let's try and solve the problem, and not just say, "It's not my problem," because it is clearly becoming a problem in this community. So, that's all I've got to say on that. Anybody else have anything else for, on the table?
Just one sentence, Mr. Chairman. LA used to send flight loads of people to Portland, like you're talking about. You know what Portland did? They sent flight loads back.
Okay. We will move on from there to discussion on the lodge with Wes Hayden and Caspar, Caspar Construction, and also Amundson Associates.
I have a hard copy of it, it was on the screen, if you all left it on here.
Think we already have a copy of it? Yep.
Or I can just be really loud.
There you go.
All right. Can y'all hear me? Before we get started, I respectfully ask the commission, if I can have five minutes at, at the end of this discussion to correct some information from the April 18th meeting. I know you guys want an update, so I just wanna kinda, myself and Wes, kinda give you an update of where we are with the project. I will show you some design things, and I guess Wes can talk about numbers, and then we can have more of a discussion after that. Just to let everybody know, this is basically what the building looked like, the original design. We gave, a number of the items were recommended by the design team, Caspar Building Systems priced some of these items, and brought some of their own to the table. And, basically, just looking at the building itself, where you see the red X's, these are a lot of things that are gonna be deleted from the project. So, the, the big overhang and the columns going up to the roof line, the vestibule on the front, the west side, and the overhang covering the mechanical equipment, the concrete barrier that we put around the building to basically protect the building, that is gonna be lowered down to about a six-inch curb. A majority of the site concrete will go away. The next image, I apologize for, my CAD tech is out for a few days, so I just kind of quickly edited up a PDF, just to kinda give you a general idea of what this is potentially gonna look like. The windows around the doors, things like that, we'll have to talk to Caspar Building Systems about, but basically, this is kinda what you're looking at. Basically, with the overhang deleted, the vestibule going away, most of the site concrete being deleted, things like that. Some of the things I wanna talk about are kinda give you an idea of the site plan. So, the, the blue area, the blue line, squiggly line around the perimeter, is basically the, the limits for the tree removal, and that's necessary for a lot of the grading of the project. The dash line where it says existing parking lot limits, that's your existing parking lot. The magenta outline is what we had designed or proposed for the parking lot. My understanding is that there is a MOU out there with the school district, and so my understanding is the MOU would be for the magenta outline. As of right now, some of the VE items take this down to basically working with the existing parking lot and adding the parking lot up to the, kinda the northwest there. The green area is all the concrete that would be deleted as part of the VE items. The orange concrete is a rough, or the orange area up there is kind of a rough idea of what the concrete might be like around the building. My understanding is Caspar Building Systems allocated about 1,500 square feet of concrete for sidewalk. That's roughly what I'm showing there, is about 1,500 square feet. In their value engineering that they put together with, you know, discussion with us and, and members of the commission, or a member of the commission, and, or members of the commission and Michael, there was also the thought of deleting the ADA parking. That is code required. I cannot delete that. I've talked to my attorney. I can, there's nothing I can do to get out of it. So, So it is code required. If you guys want to delete that, that would be an arrangement between you and the contractor, but my plans will have to keep that in there.
Hey Wes, a quick question on ADA. How many parking places are required by code?
I don't have that number off the top of my head. I believe, I believe that we, what we have there was code required based on the occupant load of the building, but I can double check that.
I would appreciate it if you would, because I'm just kind of curious because of the type of structure it is and everything else. It's not...
Right.
I know for the building itself, we're going to have to have something, but for the rest of it, I'm not really quite sure. So if you would do that, I would greatly appreciate it.
Yeah, I will double check, but it should have been the minimum code required. And so going through this stuff, I know Wes has submitted some numbers to the commission for value engineering. I do have a couple of comments on some of them, and I guess, Michael, is it okay if I speak to our conversation before this meeting?
Not sure.
Okay. There was a little bit of a question. Most of the numbers that we went through with our engineers and stuff, they all agreed that either, you know, yeah, that's pretty accurate, or, you know, prices have gone up since this is bid, so, you know, Caspar is accounting for that, I'm sure. One of the numbers for the site, site work, there was a deduction being offered. Based on the work that it's deleting, it's, I believe it's including the tree clearing, the ADA parking, the concrete around the building, it's, I think minimizing the parking lot, the main parking lot that you guys have a MOU with the school district on. We would just recommend that you just, that you don't accept the credit because based on the fact that it sounds like you have to do this for the school district anyways. I believe Michael has also gotten some preliminary numbers for taking care of some of this work, and I think you'll be ahead just working with Caspar Building Systems instead of having your own subcontractors do this work after the fact or during this project, and then it's less to coordinate between your subs are working on the job site, Wes has his subs working on the job site. You might as well just let the contractor do it, and I think you'll be ahead money-wise than trying to sub this work out.
Ron, is that the $105,000?
Yes.
VE item 10?
Yep, item 10.
Thanks.
And then for...
Well, what you're, excuse me, Ron, but what he's talking about does not equate to the full $105,000, if you're talking about that portion of the work.
That, well, that I'm not sure. I guess this was listed as a site work deducts. So I, my understanding from Michael is he's gotten numbers for tree clearing, for doing the trenching for the water line and some other things, and just the few handful of items he has puts him close to this number. So with the VE number 10, the site work deducts, if they don't accept that, they essentially get that whole parking lot, correct? So, so in my mind, it would, you would get that and also the water line too, correct?
If they do not accept that, yes.
Right. So, so what I would recommend is, my understanding is you guys have some funding from a waterline project that's going to go from the tower to the building, take a portion of that, whatever that is for this linear footage, and fold it into this project. And then whatever, and then you have the rest of it to go up to the water tower. But that's, that's my recommendation on that item.
I see what you're saying. That makes sense.
Item number nine, site concrete deducts, like I said, the ADA parking would have to remain, so I believe that number on Caspar Building Systems number would change. If you could find that money, it would be helpful in that right now, once we delete all that concrete and green, you don't have any concrete for your bus drop-off where, you know, where you're getting, people are stepping off the bus, those are stepping into grass, dirt, gravel, whatever, I don't know. But at least some of that number would need to change because the ADA parking would need to remain. And then there were a few little odds and ends that we talked to Commissioner Milney and Commissioner Freel about at a previous meeting, just little things as things changed. If we get rid of the vestibule, then we might want to put some bollards there to catch the doors, because we had the doors protected from the wind, now they're going to face into the wind, so we'd want bollards there to catch those doors so they don't swing open and things like that. So there's some minor things that would need to get tweaked with these numbers. And that's basically what I have. I don't know if Wes wants to speak to the numbers or anything like that.
Well, quickly, I can just tell you...
Just a minute, just a minute. I have a question, Mr. Chairman, I didn't understand something. This $105,000, because I do agree with you, a contractor should do the whole job, but what I'm trying to understand is, does that save us money doing it this other way or to have Wes's company do it?
So I think initially talking with Michael on the numbers he has to date, and he doesn't have things that cover all this scope, but some of the stuff he was looking at, I believe puts you pretty close to around, in the general vicinity of the $105,000, and that did not include the actual installation of the water line, correct?
Yes, Commissioner Laird, I just received numbers I've been looking for over a couple of weeks. Hey.
Sorry about that, Commissioner, I'm going to call you in. Yes, so I received a price for the removal of the trees and the stumps and disposal of that at $32,000. Trenching of the water line across the parking lot at $8,900. And then I have not had time to run the calculations, but delivery of the crushed base to cover the parking lot, that's at like $34 a ton. And so that's the significant, that's the significant cost. That'll, that'll by far go above the $100,000, but I, I need to run those numbers, and I don't have the cubic yards of what was in the plan, so I didn't have that available at the time I got this number, a few minutes before the meeting.
Well, I, my own opinion, I think one contractor should do the job, unless you're saying it saves us two or three or $400,000 in taxpayers' dollars. But I think even then, the one contractor doing the job is going to do the job, this is a good company, they'll get the job done, and they won't have the confusion.
So the discussion...
So where are you with that?
Commissioner Laird, the discussion about the tree removal and the gravel was that the county could do that work. I do not have the staff to remove that number of trees, and then it was talked about utilizing the gravel to stockpile the bear trap for that. I don't know if, I have not checked the quantities, I don't know if that would be enough, but I believe Roden Bridge could definitely utilize that on their county roads on the mountain as well. So I was trying to get into these numbers to, to see what it was actually going to cost, because I feel the county, I don't believe our staff could do all the work. I think we would have to contract that out as well.
So you agree with one contractor doing the job?
I do, yes.
Thank you very much.
Additionally, with that credit, the county was going to be left with a lot of film material that you were going to have to haul offsite. So now the general contractor would balance it out on the site and design the, build the parking lot as designed.
Sounds like a good plan.
Mr. Chairman? I agree that for a deductive only $105,000, based on the list that we see for value engineer item 10, we'd be much better off letting the contractor have those items and paying the $105,000. I do have a question about the vestibule deletion. I think that's a bad idea. I think it's a bad idea for reasons, for reasons aesthetic, and also the practicality of that door facing into the prevailing wind. And I also, it looks like that would only be a savings of $47,000. Help me understand the math on what it would save us to remove the vestibule.
It actually comes off of, that is actually part of the pre-engineered metal building one, isn't it, Wes, which is $125,000?
Yeah, it comes out of a couple of different line items there because you have the finishes that are part of that, you have the metal building manufacturer that's part of that, you have the steel erector that's part of that.
So let me just interrupt, because I want to cut to the chase, and I know we have a lot of other things to talk about today. How much is it going to save us to delete the vestibule total ballpark?
I would have to figure that out for you. I don't have that off the top of my head.
Do you think you can do it while we're talking about some of the other issues?
Maybe. Let me see what I got.
Yeah, I'd like a ballpark. I'd like to be able to move forward and give you guys direction today and quit, quit the inactivity or the lack of progress. It also seems to me, Ron, and I don't, I'm not an architect, and I don't want to redesign, and I want to have to have you redesign, but isn't there any middle ground with a vest, to have a vestibule that's functional, but maybe doesn't have quite the same architectural lines? I don't want it to look ugly and not to fit.
No, no, I, no, I agree with you. I, I mean, just so you know where I stand, I did send an email out earlier, I think it was this week or late last week, that listed a number of things that I would need to be relieved of liability on. One of those, Mike, one of the reasons we got this job, you guys wanted sustainability, energy efficiency, things like that, getting rid of the vestibule gets rid of that. Also, having the doors open into the wind creates problems, so I specifically sent an email saying there are certain things that I would need to be relieved of liability on because I don't necessarily stand by them, but if that's what it takes to get the project in budget. There's a couple scenarios. You could sit there and Caspar didn't price this option out, but we did discuss it at one point in time. If, I didn't bring the plan with me, I'm sorry. If you remember when you walked in the vestibule and you got in the building, you hadn't left and went into the assembly space. Potentially, that assembly space could move forward, and we could push the hallway to get into the assembly space further down. We could then have a door right at the front where I just showed it and create a small vestibule inside. So you could do that. It's still going to open up into the wind, I still have issues with that, I would prefer to have them swing outside. The vestibule could surely be simplified. Right now, it isn't the pre-engineered metal building guys' package. It could be taken out, designed by my structural engineer, it could be simplified, that would save a little bit of money than having the pre-engineered metal building guys do it. There are actually two vestibules...
I would actually refute that that would actually be cheaper to do it that way. I don't know that that's a fact.
Okay. That's what my structural engineer told me, and that's who I got based off of, but that's fine. But there were two, there are two vestibules. There's this one, and then there's the one off of the assembly space. The thought being that if you're having a lot of ski events, a lot of people are going to be coming in and out those doors into the assembly space, so we had a vestibule back there as well. But for sure, it could be simplified.
Mr. Chairman, I agree that there should be a vestibule there for all of the reasons everybody's been talking about. Now, the word cheap does not do much for me. I don't want to do things cheap. I do have, we do have to look after the taxpayers' money, but we don't want something cheap that ends up costing 10 times as much and causing more problems than if we had spent a little money on something that lasts until we're all at our great reward. So I hope that you guys get this figured out.
So I would tell you just quick math here, there's a couple areas where there's a bunch of numbers lumped together that I don't have actually broken out, but to answer your question, $65,000, $70,000, that would be adding the metal building package as well as the erection as well as the dirt work.
Mr. Chairman, I personally think we need a vestibule, and $65,000 is, is a small amount, I think for the inconvenience and for a lot of reasons. So thanks for giving me the ballpark, Wes.
But do you have any other questions or comments, Commissioner North?
Just a question, Ron. Because it's, you see this all over the place, but what about an open type?
Say that again?
What about an open type, like a foyer type opening instead of a closed, enclosed vestibule? You know, you have a roof over it, and they still come around. That way, you, you protect those doors, you give some opening, you know, but you don't have a lot of that added expense. You know, you can still put something relatively simple in there, just like a covered porch where you're walking around. You know, it could still look professional. I'm not saying look something cheesy, I'm just saying, something simple that actually gives you that, that wind blockage that protects the doorway, slows down that, and, you know, gives people a chance to take their skis off or whatever else.
I think, I think if we kept the, if we don't build the vestibule exterior to the building, I think you could put a wind block and things like that, like you're talking about. I still think the building needs a vestibule, so even if, again, if it was basically shifting the kitchen forward and having the hallway further down, and then building an interior vestibule would be a benefit to the project. And then maybe we just screen and put a little overhang or something to give it some architectural appeal or whatever outside, that could be done as well.
Just looking at the outside of it, with that, with that, that tall of a side on it and just the doors on there, to me, it doesn't look great.
Well, and just so you all know, I don't know how much you all know about everything. Wes, Wes, no, as far as...
Now, that was quite a question.
No, but what Wes, we were directed to do was take this, dial it down to the bare minimum, and then kind of give you some items to pick and choose from to add back in. And so that's what Caspar Building Systems did with these numbers. So that, that's where, that's where it's kind of like, hey, what is it to get it, you know, as close to the original budget amount? And that's where it was like, start hacking off major items to get it there.
Mr. Chairman, I just want a really nice building built. Now, I rely on experts in my business, and I'm looking at Wesley, he's an expert. I'm looking at you, you're an expert. Do we need the vestibule the way it's designed or not?
Oh, aesthetically, no. Aesthetically, no. You, in my opinion, you need a vestibule for sure, but does it need to look like that? No, it's an aesthetic feature.
Well, I have no...
So it could change.
I don't want to get into an argument about what it looks like. You've got one in there, and what do you think of it, Wesley? Should it be built?
Well, I think it's one of those things, again, you're, you're picking off of a grocery list. It's something you want. Is it, does it make the building nicer and better? Yeah. Is it absolutely essential to have it on the building? No.
But it keeps cold out?
Yeah.
Heat in?
Sure.
It allows people to come through the door, and, you know, a lot of people wish they had a vestibule in their house here. They call it a foyer in a house, I think, but...
Absolutely.
So you're recommending it, are you?
I mean, if it was my building, yeah, I would put them in, for sure.
Thank you.
One thing I would like to say before we proceed on this, depending on which direction this does go, we have had some preliminary discussions that if this project is going to move forward under the new parameters that we're talking about here, there's a, and I don't have the numbers today, but there's a significant amount of money as far as steel orders and different procurement of materials and different things that we're going to ask to be paid for because we're going to buy them now. We'll store all of that for the time being until the project were to get started. But there would be some bills that would come well before the construction of the building would actually start, just so everybody's kind of clear on that.
And one thing to tag along that with what Wes just said, I know a couple weeks after the bids came out, my understanding from one of my estimators is that sheet steel went up in price. This building has sheet steel on the roof, the walls, the studs, the ductwork, the metal housing for light fixtures, the metal housing for mechanical, electrical equipment, all this different stuff. So there's a lot of sheet steel in there. So I know at one point in time, you guys were going back and forth about rebid, not rebid, whatever. All I can tell you is prices just keep going up. So to wait on this project and to push it out another season or something like that and rebid it or something like that, the price is just going to keep going up.
Mr. Chairman, Wes, are you familiar with, or have you had any communication with Mike Hagler at Roden Bridge about the reconstruction of a significant portion of Casper Mountain Road and how that might impact your construction scheduling and timing?
I have not talked to Mike Hagler directly about it. We have had discussions about what it possibly looks like, but I have not talked to him direct, no.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if this is exactly the time, but I see Mr. Lambert... Mr. Chairman, I don't know if this is exactly the time, but I see Mr. Lamerson in the audience, and I know that he has a long history with a lot of things related to Casper Mountain, but in particular, the lodge. If he had some comment about some of these issues, it might be good information for us.
I agree.
Bruce, do you have anything you want to add?
I think, I think, Jim, it's called time is of the essence here.
Yeah, we'll keep moving here. So, thank you, and boy, you have so much on your plates. I appreciate all of this. Nobody wants to see this lodge finished and a great project more than me. I've been driving up and down, lived on the mountain for 50 years, so I have plenty of time to think about these things just driving home if I slow down a little bit. The window of construction, so, yes, there is a huge Federal Highway Administration project going on. Inevitably, I don't know exactly when. If we think back to the Cortez Road project of last year, maybe it was this year, similar project, I think that was $2 to $3 million. Remember, Randy Martin came in, Tom Walters couldn't move their cattle trucks, got back to the contractor, Mike Hagler arranged some things, but I'm trying to avoid some of these things, and I'm trying to figure out what's going to go on next summer on that mountain. YDOT has traffic counts for the mountain road. There are hundreds of vehicles going up and down during that four-month construction season. The building department probably knows how many permits have been called this year. People are really, really busy with construction, let alone the campgrounds, the events, and all this. So, Cortez, 2 to 300, or 2 to 3 million? This is a 19, $18 million road project going on up here, all by the feds. In the MOA you signed in March of this year, it specifically spoke to the fact that the mountain road would not be closed because it's the way 700 people get up and down. And I did just last week send an email to Mike to figure out the timing on this because that project can run out till 2026. The feds haven't put out the project for bid yet. It's going to be from the fork in the road on the top all the way to the BLM campgrounds on the back of Muddy Mountain, so it's pretty extensive. The, the part that, where most people live is not the whole scope of the project, but Mike said back, and I've got copies of this if you want, that they're hoping that the bid for the project would be out by August of this year. The intent is to have some closures with delays, and then there will be a detour when work is going around the lodge via Stube Loop, which conflicts with the feds' requirement that the road doesn't close. We expect the road to be open every night and every morning so people can get to and from work. All day long, there's traffic up there. Right now, it's mostly a lot of dump trucks, construction trucks, materials going up. Everybody's forced in this little four-month season. The feds in the MOU also said, or MOA also mentioned, there is a four-month season. Construction length is anticipated to be about five months. Weather only allows for construction from May through November. There cannot be closures during construction as Casper Mountain Circle Drive provides access to 700 residents. But this could really impact if your project overlaps because Mike also mentioned, let's see, be working on a plan. I was in hopes that the lodge contract would be placed into foundation as we speak, but there was not been, there's not been an award. Next year is not the time to be taking 80,000-pound concrete trucks up the mountain. The milled roadway will be soft. If we have the moisture we're getting this year, it would be devastating to get heavy loads through during the milling and paving operation. The part of this $18 million project that affects the top of the mountain there is pretty small. It's only about a half mile or so, but we're talking about, there's just a lot going on. And if, if Randy Martin and Tom Walters came in about Cortez, where do you get all the residents up there? They're trying to do stuff, let alone your project. So, I'm just looking ahead and going, phew, we better start talking to each other. And we better make sure the fed requirements are also the county, and now's the time to do it, instead of you having a room full of Casper Mountain residents who haven't heard a word about this. There's been some talk, but nobody knows for sure. The other thing real quick, and I've got copies of Mike's information and the federal information you signed off on. The water line, this is really important to me. There is no public water on the mountain. There is no potable water on the mountain. You've, I think, budgeted a quarter of a million dollars or something to get a line into the lodge. That lodge is going to be locked most of the year, fact. So, having water in there is fine, but I hope we have outside spigots on that building, which we talked about clear last August in our little meeting. And I hope that part of the site plan is to drop part of that supply line across the parking lot for a frostproof spigot that could eventually be a water station for campers. Now, they go, oh, people are going to fill their cisterns out. No, you can make it to where you can just fill small jugs. But we've got fire danger up there, not this year because it's rained every day, but there is no water on the mountain. So, if you could spend a quarter of a million dollars to put water into that lodge, please extend a spur off to the other side of the parking lot. That eventually might be the site of a kiosk, and it would be a place where campers can fill their water jugs and for safety reasons and everything else. I've had people, campers, come to my house looking for water up there. So, this is the only water line we got on the whole mountain, and probably the only one we're going to have for a long time. Please spec a frostproof spigot away from the lodge, which could be used for drive-through, kiosk information, whatever, and fill their little camp jugs. Or, in the case of a fire, you all know, first 10, 20, 30 minutes of a fire is when it becomes something we put out, or the mountain burns down, and there is no water. So, just two thoughts in this, you know, thing. We've got some time here, but we should be looking ahead and, and think about these things, please. And I appreciate all that's going on, and it's just a little, few little things here. If you want copies of the correspondence with the feds or with Mike Hagler, I've got them for you. Just let me know, I'll be around.
Thanks, Peter.
Questions?
Thank you.
Okay.
Commissioner Mill.
Or you got something?
One of you, you have something to add?
Go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to, just a couple quick things. For the, I sent, just so you know, I sent Commissioner Freeland, Commissioner Millie, an email prior to this meeting about a typo. I did talk with Wes, I did talk with Michael about it. Disregard the email, it was just, just, it was a typo on their part. The numbers are correct. So, just to let you know on that one. And then the other thing is, I'm not sure, my understanding is that there was some sort of a schedule, there was a schedule for completion of the parking lot that was tied to an MOU. I don't know that Casper Building Systems knows about that and if that would affect anything on their part, that, so it's something we probably need to discuss in the future.
I don't know what that is, if there is one.
Michael, can I answer that real quick?
Commissioner, I can answer to that. So, we've been working with the school district on an MOU for their capital contribution on this. We've got it almost finalized. County attorney has assisted in that. We sent the final slight changes to the district last week, I believe it was Thursday or Friday. But they have in there, they're going to contribute $750,000 to the project, but they want the parking lot complete within one year. They had a, one year of the execution or the date on the MOU, which they had it for June. I wanted to change that to September, and then there was some insurance verbiage that needed to be updated due to the county's insurance policies with warm and all, so it read correctly. I have not heard back from Steve L. Bogan yet on that, and I will follow up with him tomorrow.
Well, Mr. Brown, I'd like to hear from Wes on this, but I don't want that, I don't want that to drive the boat in terms of getting the parking lot by a certain timeframe. And if, and if that fits with the project's schedule, great, but that is an area where I think we have to push back and, and say, you can't force that upon the contractor, especially in light of this being a mountain project that's going to have seasonal and probably traffic limitations as well. So, Wes, do you have any comment on that?
Yeah, excuse me. So, originally, I don't have the exact date in front of me, but we had proposed to be completed with this project in January of what would have been 2024. And now, that's going to be obviously one year later. To, to say that the parking lot would be completed in September of next year, I think is, we definitely need to push back on that. Put that more towards the end of the completion of the actual project, which, once we reevaluate that schedule, but you're basically talking end of year 2024 is where that would be done.
Mr. Chairman, so I don't want the cart to get in front of the horse, Michael, and, and I need county legal to also recognize that we probably ought not to go make a whole bunch of commitments to the school district until we actually have an agreement with the contractor as designed, you know, by our architects. So, just understand that, that can't be the whole captain of the ship.
Okay. Yeah, I'll, I'll reach out to the school district and, and give them this conversation about where we're at, and at the earliest, it would be January 2025, so we don't want to tie that MOU to a specific date because of that, and hopefully, they'll still be agreeable to the MOU, and we can get the funding ahead of time. But I'll, I'll work on that and keep you guys updated.
Mr. Chairman, everybody think with me on this, because what hits me when I hear all this, I believe it's really important to get this lodge built as quickly as possible. I would like to start on it right away. I would like to put the construction of these roadways off until this gets done and some other things get done, such as this water issue. How do you guys feel about that?
The DOT roadway, the Casper Mountain Road?
Just, this construction's going to interfere with building this building, because you heard, you heard him, I know.
We can't put off the DOT.
We can't?
No.
So, can we put off certain phases of it or certain ways they do it? Because the way I'm hearing it, when Mr. Lamerson explained it, how do we stop people from going to their houses that live there year-round? If you've got several hundred people going up and down that mountain, and they're going to close it, I, you know, when they, they don't close an entire interstate highway, they do it in segments. And what they're telling me about these...
Whoever the contractor is that gets that bid, they'll, they'll manage that per those DOT federal guidelines.
Yeah. I, I understand it's more simple, and I'm trying to make it, Jim, I'm trying to make it simple here for just a second. I hear him say, all of these prices have gone up on this building cost, and they're not going to go down, in my opinion. Have you seen anything go down lately in price, Wesley?
Not really. I mean, things are leveling off some, but going down doesn't seem to happen very often.
So, how do we get this handled, Jim and commissioners? How do we get this thing, them started on this where they can get this built right away? There's got to be a way to do it, doesn't there, Peter? Doesn't there, Steve? I mean, is, Mr. Vice Chairman, isn't there a way we can get this done?
Commissioner Laird, is it possible, I don't know who's, are you guys running the project or is it the state? Is it, is it possible for the state to put in language that they need, that contractor needs to accommodate this project and allow access and things like that?
It's a federal project. It's a federal project. That's what Bruce was telling everybody.
Okay.
So, there is that language in there that will have to be there. Even with the, even with the construction, the road construction, not worrying about ours or anybody else's, even just the road construction, there's going to be heavy traffic, heavy vehicles going up and down it anyways, regardless. So, our added cement trucks or gravel trucks, you know, it's, it's just, it's going to be another vehicle that's not going to be pretty up there during the, while that road's being constructed, but there are requirements that are going to have to be met to allow for construction, allow for residents, allow for whatever up there, right? I did talk to Mike quite a bit about some of these points that, that we discussed. The rotamill option is not an option that will, they won't have any rotamill because that's being put back into, back into the road itself, so they don't have to haul as much. The idea of using the gravel pile that's up there that he has right there by Bear Trap, basically, it's either pay Peter now or pay Peter later. Sorry, Peter. But, you know, we, we can, we can use it, and we'll have to start buying base to be hauled up there later, or buy base to be put up there now, and in a few years, start buying base to be put up there, because eventually, we will have to be buying base to go up there. We will run out of that gravel pile eventually, so, you know, it, he, Mike would rather, just out of convenience, he'd keep that pile for, for the road, but if we want to use it, you said, use it, eventually, we're going to have to start buying it anyways.
So, can they start, but can we start then building this thing now?
We'd have to accept it. I don't think we've formally accepted anything, have we?
We got it, well, then, we should do that right away, Mr. Chairman.
So, part of the, excuse me, Pete, part of the reason that that's tricky, Dallas, is that the, the lead times on some of the materials, that if we don't order them until now...
Right.
They won't even be here until next year. So, for us to mobilize up the mountain, say, in a couple weeks and get started on this, it doesn't, one of the things in the original bid was, there was an idea out there that being able to stretch it over two construction seasons would actually save money, and in our opinion, we actually think that's more expensive. And so, our idea always was, even on the original bid, was that we would start the project in the spring, and we would more or less be done by that following January. And I still think that's the window. I don't think we're going to gain anything if we started this summer versus being completed next summer.
Thank you.
Yep.
So, Mr. Chairman, to follow up on Commissioner Laird's desire, I'd like to go through the value engineering list and give maybe some direction on, on where we stand, so these guys can move forward with design, and you guys can move forward with some planning and some pencil to paper.
And we need to start solidifying contracts. We did put some contingencies in this value engineering to take care of some of that, knowing that, you know, prices are going to go up and, you know, things are going to change, but the longer that that stretches out, the worse that may get. So, yeah, I agree with what you're saying.
So, item number one, delete masonry scope interior and exterior, $35,000. To me, that's more of a cosmetic aesthetic thing, and that by using other panels will be, it won't look like junk, but it'll, it'll, to me, that one seemed pretty straightforward and acceptable. Any, any thought from others on the masonry deletion?
I'd actually say it was quite a bit of money just because of the concrete in the, in the base of it itself, that would have to go into the floor itself, because it was a full chimney all the way up. We could come back in a later date, as we talked about, and just put a hearth in there and not a big, you could still get a fireplace in there. You just wouldn't need, you had to be beefed up the way we have it right now.
Right. Item number two, unless you guys want to weigh in on that, but we got 12 things to talk about.
I'm kind of, I'm, I'm from Wyoming. I just keep thinking of three words, get her done.
Well...
And I know we can do it, so I'm wanting to hear the rest of your presentation there.
Let me ask Wes a question real quick. Wes, what do you, I know, I know with the steel, you're talking six months out before you get that. What other items are you looking at? And we're looking at, what, about $400,000 for the, for the kit, if I remember right from the bid?
Hmm.
I, I'm stretching my memory, so...
Yeah, mine too.
Oh, you mean, like, how long to get it?
No, I'm talking about, Wes was talking about upfront money, that we're going to have to order stuff. to order stuff, go ahead and get it paid for. I understand that completely. I'm just asking, I'm trying to find out just exactly what we're looking at as far as what you're anticipating.
The steel package is going to be the big one. There's going to be others, you know, doors, windows, you know, various finishes, the electrical gear, depending on what we actually have in here. Some of that's running longer than even steel. So there'll probably be some electrical items, some mechanical items that might be ordered upfront. But the, the metal building package will definitely be one of the bigger ones. Let me see if I got that from the original bid. Yeah, I mean, call it 250,000 from the original bid. That may be a little less based on some of these changes that we're talking about. But, you know, a lot of that, you know, is, is going to come upfront for sure.
These are just estimations, so we're not holding any of the precise number. We know their estimation.
Right.
So item number two, vestibules, I'd like to keep the vestibules. If there's some ways to cut some of the cost, I'm for that. But I, I think getting enclosed vestibules is a good idea. So I'm in favor of keeping that because I don't think the deletion of approximately $65,000 is, is worth it. Anybody want to delete the vestibule?
I'm just going to go on the record to say, I sat in a meeting with Jim and all these deductions are what we talked about deducting out of there. So, I mean, you may have reasons for putting them back in and I'm more than willing to listen to what you have to say. But this is what we thought, because of the cost of this project and we're trying to get the project done and trying to get it within a means that we feel that we should be spending on it, this is where we ended up. But there's good reasons behind it that we didn't see. I'm more than happy to, but I won't be weighing in anymore on this because right now this is kind of where we landed.
Great. And I, I thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I, I think this is just to, for the three of us that have been really involved in that and that if we have somewhat of a consensus, then, then I think we can move forward. And so that's the, that's where I come down on the vestibule and making, and I'd like to see it stay in. On the other ones, talk to me just briefly about the HBA, the HVAC deducts. I'm fine with deleting the fireplace. Air conditioning system, I don't know that that's real wise. I think that that building will get used in certain high points of the summer and it might be nice to have versus going back and trying to retrofit it at a later point. Might be quite a burden. So can somebody talk to me about why we'd want to delete the air conditioning system and how much money that would save?
It, from a mechanical standpoint, it was just, it was a cost savings that they, there was thrown out there. I will tell you, Hogadon did not build their building with air conditioning, but they did come back and I guess either they added it or they're adding it. It will, in my mind, it will cost you more to add it later than if you do it upfront. It'd be less expensive to do it upfront. My understanding is the furnace and stuff would be, everything would be set up to receive it in the future. But again, it was just that kind of dialing things down to the bare minimum to try to figure out to get a building closer to the original budget.
I should probably, I probably should have said this at the very beginning. So all of these ideas basically stemmed from us trying to say, okay, how much can we possibly save within reason? And it was like, and so at that point in time, you start kind of picking the items that have a larger dollar figure to them than maybe some, you know, we're not going to save a whole lot by changing a floor tile or something that, you know, is, is really not going to change much. And so this was basically just the big ticket items that we said, this is the amount of money we can save without really changing the use of the building. And, you know, chopping square footage or something, you know, extreme at that point. And so was it necessarily evaluated whether or not you would want to have air conditioning? Well, the answer to that is of course you would. But it was also thought that possibly that could be something you could live without and hence it ended up on the list. And that goes for basically everything that's, that's on here.
But it was set up so that we'll be, like Ron said, it will be able to bolt it back into it at a later date if we do determine that it needs-
Right. But I also would agree with Ron that that will cost more later. Yeah.
The, and you do not have operable windows in this building. So it's not where you're, you're not going to be able to open up a window and get fresh air. The mechanical system will bring in fresh air from the outside, whatever that temperature is.
So I'd like to have the air conditioning system back in. What's the mini split system?
That actually cools the IT equipment. There were discussions with IT. They feel they can get away with an exhaust fan to the closet where the IT is going to go. So that was deleted out. The one stipulation I'll have for Casper Building Systems is they cannot penetrate the roof with that exhaust fan. It's going to have to go through a sidewall. So that's fine.
Go ahead.
I did talk to IT. They were, they were good with the, with the temp sure, with ambient temp sure, just as long as we had a inflow and outflow of, of air. So it doesn't matter where it comes from or goes to. We don't have to actually have exhaust out of the building. It could go into the mechanical room or wherever you want to put it. It doesn't matter. Just as long as she has flow through. But it doesn't, as far as the ambient temperature, she wasn't worried about it.
What's the ATS?
Sorry, that's the automatic transfer switch. That's what takes the building in the event of a loss of power. It automatically turns the generator on.
So the, so the building does not have a generator?
Right.
But the thought was early on was this could be used as an, kind of an emergency building on the mountain. So if you guys ever wanted to, you could bring a generator, hook it up to the building. And then if you had people on the mountain that needed to be there in case of fire or whatever, I don't know, you could actually bring a generator, hook it up to the building and keep the building running. But it is a pretty pricey piece of equipment as well. So that was one of the reasons why that was deleted.
Did, did you ever figure out what the actual load of the building itself was, not including everything else that was associated with the parking lot and everything else? Just the building for that, for that?
I don't think-
Because if you're talking about a generator that's going to be running it, we don't need a 50 KW generator to run a building that only takes seven.
Right.
So that's something, you know, that, and that could dramatically change the cost of that, that switch all the way around. I would not, I don't have any problem with omitting that. I don't have any problem with omitting the air conditioning for right now as long as we set it up and it's prepared. You know, as long as you've got the duct working and everything and we can have the AC later on, I don't have any problem with that at all. On a year like this right now, I'm pretty sure nobody's turning on their AC up there during the summertime. You know, the heating obviously is going to be more important and then the, and then the venting and the, the IT portion of it. But I don't have any problem with doing that where we look at it later on and actually come back and put that in. I mean, our maintenance guy is, is a HVAC specialist and he's going to be buying a lot of different ACs. So that's something that I think we can work with him in the future and look at that as an option.
Well, I, I do, I understand that, but I, I would just, and I guess we're going back to this item on the air conditioning. But I think to have ventilation capability in the, in the building at the, at the onset, from the onset is, is prudent and a good idea. On the electrical deducts, I don't mind omitting all of those other than, I'm not sure that we want to deduct the site lighting poles. There's a per deduction per pole, I guess, of $2,311. Seems to me we might want to keep those. I don't know what the rest of you think about that.
And, and that was not in the total. That was just an if, if you wanted to delete them. So right now what happened was the pole switched over from steel poles to wood poles.
Right.
And then, and then there was this other one, if we wanted to take it further. So-
So right now the poles are in the numbers.
There would be site lighting.
Yeah, with wood poles.
And I'm, I'm good with that. I'm, I'm fine with the concrete deductions. Ron, I, I agree that we've got to have the ADA parking. So whatever that takes, it takes. The site work deducts for $105,000, I think we ought to keep that on the contractor and not fool around with it if it's just $100,000. And I guess that's it.
Mr. Chairman, I'm trying to get a feeling for, for what's disturbing me about this whole thing. And what's disturbing me, I guess, is, is, is that my desire to get it done right away is rubbing up against trying to, to save money, which is an honorable thing for commissioners to do is to save money. But it's not to be cheap. Nobody said that they want a cheap lodge up there. What, what I'd like to see is a lodge that, that after I'm dead and gone and these guys are all dead and gone, somebody says, that's one of the things they did right. And it's standing and it's doing well and it's cool in the summer and warm in the winter and has plenty of parking and the public really likes it and it's done a lot for Casper Mountain. But I know that when people start beating you guys up about price, then it's, then you're starting to think about what can we deduct? And, you know, I've, I've done that a couple of times on cars and I always regretted it because I didn't want to pay this extra $5,000. And when I finally decided to be really needed electric windows, it cost you $25,000. And that's what I'm worried about here is more delays and more costs that we hadn't anticipated. We didn't, I guess, anticipate when we had the architect give us their cost estimates and then the bids came in much higher. But these guys know what it costs to get, get stuff like that built. And quite frankly, for this building, I'm, I'm a commissioner willing to pay them to get this done and get it done as quickly as they can under their ability to do it. That's the way I would be if somebody came in my office and wanted me to take their case. I would lay out when I could start and when I can do it and what it's going to cost you. And it may vary as we go depending on what happens. So what I, what I see is a great project that, that I'd really like to see done. I think they all want to see it done, but to, to languish over all of these little things that were taken out that maybe we just ought to leave them in. The good thing is the county's not broke. And I think that we can build a building that in the long term, when we look back on it, will have saved a lot of money if we get the building done the way it's perceived and the way everybody really wants it and get it going as soon as possible. That's my just general statement on the subject.
So I'm good with these. Like Steve, Chairman said, we went over these. I'm good with any of them. If we want to keep them, that's good. In, if we want to kick them out and say if Wes is good with the, the site work portion of it, I'm good with it. However, let's get it going. I'd say we need to accept and get moving with, with Casper Building and get some kind of contracts in place at this point. I feel that he's gone well above and beyond at this point for this project.
Commissioner Millen, for clarification, are you, what do you think about the vestibule?
If you all want the vestibule, I'm just saying, I'm good with all of these. Or if you want to take all of them out, I don't, I'm at that point.
Yeah, but I, I think what we're trying to do is get to the point where we've got at least three, if not five of us saying, here's what you guys need to do.
Right.
And so if, if you're going to abstain.
I'm not abstaining. I'm saying, I went through this. These were all good. For me, if you want, if everybody's of the majority that want to put the vestibules back in, okay, let's get the vestibules back in, keep the rest of this as is and move forward. If we want to put the, the side, site work deducts back in, then that's good. Let's keep moving forward. The, the electrical deducts, the HVAC deducts, plumbing deducts, concrete, all that stuff, I believe, I think makes sense.
So you're okay with no air conditioning?
I am okay with it. We can put it in later.
What do you guys think about those?
I want to put it all back in because we're going to end up wanting it. And then we're going to end up paying more to get it. It's going to be five years down the road. We could do it now and actually save the money everybody wants to save by building a first class deal right now. Because a first class deal in five years is going to be twice as much or three times as much. And every second that goes is just like all this other stuff I've seen happen, where we've lost money, where we've done this, we've done that. And we've somehow got to cut through the political red tape and give these gentlemen their, their money and give them a check so they can get this stuff ordered and have it ready to rock and roll. And they can get, get it up there and get their trucks up there and get their people up there. I'm leaving it up to them. They know what they're doing.
So, so why don't we go through each one of these, like Peter already did, and, and actually get a thumbs up, thumbs down, what we want for Wes's, because right now I imagine it's about as clear as mud, right? Where we're at?
Well-
So I can give some clarity to this whole thing.
I thought we just went through it. I want to go through it again. We didn't hear people on this table. We-
I'm, I'm thumbs up for what you said, Peter, very clearly. I would like to add the other two items. I would like to turn it over to these guys. And Wesley, I'm looking at you. I want you to build this just like if your dad hired you to do it for him. That's what I want for the county. And I think you'll do that.
Yeah, I do. Yeah. So we're going to wrap this up. I think everybody here, even Ron said that the vestibules need to go back in there and that, because you were wanting to have, you need those in there. And I think we also talked about the air conditioning system itself. I think we're kind of split on that, but I have no problem in putting that back in. I think the whole idea behind this was to cut the cost down. That's what we did. There's items that you think need to go back in. Those were the main two. The, the other one was the site work itself for 105. You know, that one I would like to, because we had discussed on that, those trees that come down, we have another use for those over at Crimson Dawn. And so I would like to see if we can salvage some of those trees so we can still utilize them on, on that project, you know, itself. So I, you know, the numbers that Michael's coming up with, I'm sure not taking that into account of cutting those down and, and moving over there for that project. So I still want to keep that in mind. But if we're adding that one back in there too, then, then I think that's where we were at. We're adding those three back in.
And the ADA parking.
And the ADA parking. But we're going to find out how many are required. We're not just going to put five in or three in. We're going to find out what we were required to have.
So Wes, did you hear us? If we can have the trees stockpiled, you get the stumps, we'll take the trees.
So, yeah.
You didn't, you didn't smile.
So there's, there's going to be a few adjustments to this just because things are lumped together in different areas. But if I'm understanding the totality of the picture, we want to put the vestibules back in. We want to put the HVAC deductions back in, specifically the air conditioning system. And we also want to get rid of the, basically take the site work back to the original scope. Is that correct?
And one, we were directed to keep that. Relocate the gas service. That's going to remain. It's not going to be in there. Yep.
But then I'm getting rid of that.
You forgot one thing, Wesley.
Yes, sir.
We want you to start tomorrow.
I mean, that, that's an arbitrary one that I guess is-
This columns? The columns there? That one? Yeah, my understanding is, we're, just so we understand, so the, the, the big massive overhang goes away, right? We're just keeping the vestibule. Are you okay with keeping that vestibule or you want it simplified and redesigned?
How much money is it going to save us? How much time is it going to-
I mean, it's going to take, it's going to take some time. I don't know.
So how much money is it going to save us to redesign it to something that's similar? I mean, or if we're going to save $25,000, don't bother.
Well, that's, I mean, I guess that's the question, Wes. I mean, would it be easier to just leave it the way it is, based on the number you've already kind of roughly given them?
I mean, yeah, short of going through a redesign and a repricing.
I mean, I, I guess the one thing that I would do is if we're getting rid of those other two columns, we'd maybe get rid of these columns because they kind of served no purpose at that point. It was kind of all- It was kind of all tied together. So we could simplify this one, maybe get rid of the columns, shorten the overhang.
And a little of the overhang, so it's consistent.
Yeah, so you'll still have an angle, but it'll simplify it. Okay. And then, just so you understand, we were given direction previously with Commissioner Milne and Commissioner Freels for BE item number six, relocate the gas service to exterior wall near the mechanic room. We're not going to do that. We're going to leave it where it was. That was under previous discussion. And then, am I correct in saying that the, based on what Commissioner Freel said, are we kind of keeping the area for the fireplace but not installing the fireplace? Is that, or do we get rid of the whole fireplace tower?
The whole tower itself.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be the first bullet point on BE item seven, right?
Yes.
Delete fireplace, not taking that out.
Yeah, it, yeah, there was a, yeah. I'll coordinate it with Wes. There's some other stuff, but yeah. Okay. Yeah, there's like concrete and walls and stuff that I think weren't accounted for before, but we'll take care of that. Okay. So I think we have as much information as we're going to get out of this meeting today.
I think we're close.
Okay.
So when are we going to hear back from you? When are you guys going to get your numbers finalized, when are we going to see a contract?
I don't know. What do you think, Ron?
I honestly think our end, based on what Wes needs from us, I only think it'll take a few weeks for us to do our drawings. I don't know if you need them to reprice anything, though. I think that was more for construction, because if we're...
The vestibule, maybe, but we can probably deal with that after the fact. I would say probably a couple of weeks for both.
So not next meeting, but the meeting after, will that something do?
Which is when?
August 1st.
August 7th. No, August 8th. No, you're right, August 1st.
August 1st. Unless you can get it done by the 18th of July.
Okay.
Get it done by the next meeting, will you?
Which is August 1st, right?
No, July 18th.
July 18th. August 1st.
Get it done by then and tell us how much check you need to get your stuff. That's what I'd like to see.
Because on my end, for them, I'm just a pretty picture. For you, I don't know if you need much more.
Yeah, I got to get a lot of feedback from a lot of different organizations, so, I mean, we'll see what we can do.
We'll hope for the 18th. Worst case scenario, August 1st. Okay. Is that fair for you all?
It's fair. It's the 15th of August.
I think August 1 is, I think August 1 is doable, for sure.
Michelle, can we put that on the August 1st, though?
Heather, you'll be involved in the actual show.
No. No. Yep.
So are you going to tell us then how much the check's going to be for, so you've got money in your pocket and we can have a feeling you've ordered some stuff?
No, that will come later. It'll probably, if we approve everything on the first, contracts are in place, it would still be a matter of a few months before any of those funds would be needed. But we can certainly start giving everybody ideas of what those would be. But we won't need it right then on August 1. It'll come later this fall.
And I believe my firm will be involved in putting the contract together, because I think it was an ADA contract, if I remember right.
Probably.
Yeah. So we'll fill in the blanks, is all we're doing.
Well, just do your job, and we'll be happy.
There you go. Can I have five minutes of your time?
If you can do it in less than five would be great, because we're already almost 45 behind.
All right, Wes, this doesn't involve you, just so you know. All right. I need to correct some information stated at the April 18 meeting that I was not in attendance at, where you guys discussed the bid. Most of these statements are regarding statements made by Keith Tyler. I will paraphrase what he said, because I do not want to be accused of misquoting him. Keith Tyler mentioned, "We only allowed three weeks for bidding without pre-warning the contractors, and there wasn't enough time to bid the project. We were about one day shy of four weeks. The contractors were all given advance notice before the bid advertisement, including Keith Tyler's contractor friend, who I personally notified him of the upcoming project during a meeting with a different client. We have a project that is finishing up construction in Riverton, Wyoming, that is 86,000 square feet, $14.6 million, and 10 times more complex than this facility, and it had bids due in four-week time period. The time allocated for bidding this project was more than adequate. Keith Tyler mentioned, "We were treating this too much like an ordinary project in downtown Casper by both the architect and Mr. Brown. I disagree. The design, the construction schedule were all set up for the mountain. The schedule was very similar to Hogedown, as Bruce Lamerson mentioned, starting construction as the snows thawed, closing in the facility by December, and finishing up through the winter. Keith Tyler mentioned, "We should talk to a couple contractors who didn't bid as, and ask how much time they needed. We did talk to a couple contractors. One said about six months' time, another one said 10 months, so we settled on nine months. There were concerns about liquidated damages. In my 30 years of doing this sort of work, I believe I've seen maybe one or two projects where liquidated damages have ever been implemented on a project. It is typically a hammer to get the project done, so the project doesn't drag out indefinitely. Weather delays, delays by the owner, even material delays, et cetera, can all extend the contract completion date if the owner allows it. Keith Tyler mentioned, "We were late getting this out to bid. We plan on having a stakeholder meeting right off the bat for this project to get all the information out on the table right away, and we were told that the commission did not want this. Then, while we were under design, someone invited Keith Tyler and Bruce Lamerson to the table to change the design. Some of these changes reduced costs, some of their changes added costs, and some of their requests were completely discarded. In either case, it set us back on our schedule. Keith Tyler mentioned concerns about the mandatory pre-bid meeting. These are standard on government projects. They're set up in one place so that everyone can hear the same thing. They're set up so that we do limit the bidding pool to contractors that are truly interested in the project, and we don't get some fly-by-night contractor from out of state just throwing a number at the project, and then you get an incomplete project. We don't check identification. Keith Tyler's contractor friend could have sent the secretary, custodian, or whoever. My understanding is that one of our engineers even called Keith Tyler's contractor friend, who was on his way to the meeting but was running late. And he was told if he made it up to the meeting before it ended, he would be able to bid the project. He returned around and decided not to go to the meeting. So one contractor didn't drive up the mountain that day, and another one that was going to bid on that project had two projects dropped in their laps prior to the bid that tentatively filled their schedule, so they chose not to bid the project. That is why you didn't have more bidders on this project. It was also mentioned that he didn't feel like he was getting his money's worth out of the architect, and that they have, and that we have done less than stellar job here, and seems like things weren't done as well as they should have been. Well, I've got two college degrees, 30 years of experience, and I have licenses in five states that say otherwise. I don't just go out there and throw out conjecture, as Commissioner Laird warned people against in the previous meeting. I either state the facts or find the correct answer. We were very clear to the commissioner representative that we were concerned that construction estimates and construction bids were off all over the country. Your commissioner representative told us that we could allocate the entire $2.5 million to the building and put the parking lot as an ad alternate as a safety measure if the project came in over budget. But just before the project went out, we were informed that the school district planned on allocating somewhere between $750,000 and $1 million. We asked if we still needed to add, to do the ad alternate at that point, and we were told no. So it was our understanding, along with some of our engineers, that the money was in addition to the $2.5 million budget, bringing it closer to $3.2 to $3.5 million. There was also a question posed by the commission about having an owner's rep on this project. Again, in all my years of experience, a project this size would have someone like Michael from the owner's workforce managing the project, because the architects do the same work as an owner's rep. Thank you.
Thank you for your statement. I think it was apropos myself. But here's what I want everybody to do. I want everybody to follow the law and get the job done, which is, when I look at you guys, I think that's what you want to do. I look at them, that's what they want to do. We have to follow the law. You have to follow the law. Sometimes we don't like it, but we follow it.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners.
Chris, yeah, if we could, we'll have the Health Department come up next. And we'll just keep moving forward.
Sorry, I had the wrong last one. I couldn't hear what I said.
Thank you, Anna. So we're here for a Health Department building owner representation discussion.
So I'm going to ask Commissioner Nicolason to kind of start this off, as I wasn't at the last discussion, just to follow up with any questions, comments of where we are at with those two.
Ms. Chairman, thank you, Anna. As the board knows, there is a committee formed to help guide things as we move forward with the architect. There are some, we had a preliminary or a first meeting with the architect, and Mr. Daigle is here today, so thanks for being here, Brandon. We kind of went over timeframes, and I think that there are a couple bigger items, and those need to be dealt with right off, I guess, soon. One is the owner's rep issue. One is a commissioning agent, which maybe isn't quite as time-sensitive. We need to make some decisions on geotech evaluation. That then helps the architect and the contractor, you know, move forward, and that has to be done sooner rather than later. So I think that one, and probably the biggest issue today, is to determine what we're going to do for an owner's rep on a project of this size and magnitude. I think that we recognize, at least I think all of us recognize, the value of that. There would not be, it's my understanding, any need for a RFP, for professional services. And I think that there is an architect named Tim Shank that has submitted a letter of interest to at least tell us what his proposal would be. I do have copies of that. I received it right about noon today, and I'll pass you all copies. Tim is the former partner of our consultant on the project, Lisa Hubbard. Tim has done the Converse County Library, which is a comparable project in terms of size and scale. That's for, and Tim has been recommended by, I believe, both our consultant and, I don't know if it's been a recommendation, but at least I think that Mr. Daigle's firm has worked with him a number of times, and he's very qualified. There is another individual whose name may be Keith Brown, who has provided owner's rep services in the past on government projects, including, my understanding is, the Thyra Thompson Building for the state that was recently put in. My thinking is that we interview those two firm individuals, plus another one or two if we have some interest. Go ahead, Anna. You look like you have something you wanted to interject.
We actually do have the Third Person Wember and Associates. Mr. Daigle sent that to me on Friday, and I apologize, I didn't forward that to you yet, but there is interest from him. He is the one that is located in Evanston and completed work on the Basin K-8 school. So there is three owner's reps that we do have identified.
So, you know, if there are others, we can certainly talk about that. I think what we're, what we have done as a committee is ask the people that we know and trust and that we're working with for who would be good owner's reps for a government project of the size and scale we're talking about here, and those are the three names that have arisen. So I think that it would be good for this project, and Anna and the architects, to, for the commissioners, to select an owner's representative within the next 30 days. I don't know that we can do it sooner than that, but I think that that's kind of the outside timeframe for how long we can put this off. As everyone will recall, there are some pretty significant constraints in terms of the utilization of the federal funding, the substantial federal funding that's involved. So those are, that's kind of the introduction to owner's rep.
So just to add to that is, there are quoted statements of owner's rep actually saving project significant amount of money. So I think it is in our best interest to have something like this. I know you all are very busy. It takes a lot of time to go piece by piece of what decisions are. Having someone on site and working with me, the architect and everything, just to keep the process moving, time is of the essence. We've already had two meetings, and they're moving us fast. So the sooner that we can get someone on board, I think the better, just to get them caught up to where we're at, so they can move forward as we develop the project further.
Well, I definitely think we need an owner's rep. I think we need it on all these projects across the board. I guess my question back to you, Heather, is do we need to open this up so that, to be fair to everybody, to be able to put in for it? And what's that look like?
So Jared and I, it's funny, we just spoke about this briefly, I think on Monday. So basically, if we anticipate that the services are going to be in excess of $50,000, we should put this out for formal bidding. If it's between, I don't know, I can't remember, 10 to 50, we can take informal bids like what has been suggested, just getting letters of interest from folks. So I don't really know what the anticipated cost of this is going to be, but if it's over 50, I do think a formal RFP probably should be put out.
I do see on the one that we're provided today, we're at 64, so we're over.
So I have a question, Mr. Chairman, for Heather, and really the legal question is, I thought for professional services, we weren't required to. Are you referring to state statute or a policy?
No, I am referring to our procurement policy, where we've basically said goods and services.
Okay. So if it says services, so the, one of the issues in the past, and I have more familiarity with this than I'd like to admit, is how long it takes to get a request for proposal finalized, even before it's sent to the newspaper for publication. So in the past, and I'm not suggesting that it was our current county attorney's issue, but in the past, it's taken four months to get an RFP contract, or no, the RFP form out of the county attorney's office. And not all of it's county attorney's office. Some of it is some coordination and things like that. So then, if we're going to do the publication, that's weeks, if not a month?
I think we publish for, my recollection is three weeks, three successive weeks.
So first of all, I would just throw out on the table that this might be a time to make an exception to the procurement policy, if we can do that, and if maybe all of us are seeing it the same way. But I just am throwing that out. I don't even know if, I don't know if we, I assume we can change our policy, but I don't know that we should without being careful about it.
The thing I see there, it's a kind of a, it isn't a, he's saying he's bidding the whole project based on 32 weeks. Might, but if he finishes it in 54 weeks, then it's under $50,000 bucks. So I think it has the possibility of being under $50,000, so I don't know that the policy strictly applies to this particular situation. And it's not a statute. I'm a statutory sort of guy. Some of these policies are, we're given some authority to take a look at the policy. to take a look at the policies. I can say one thing about this guy, Tim Shank. He's a big deal, man, and he's from Casper. Well, he knows what he's doing. He was involved in the Townsend deal and all kinds of things. I don't know the other two gentlemen and I'd like to know more about him, but he was one of the people we interviewed the other day and actually put on one of these, well, we're recommending that you take him as one of these board members. But I would say, Madam County Attorney, do you really think that we have to do that if it could be under 50 and it might be?
So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Laird, I mean, I think that if you have a policy, which we do, we've adopted, I mean, you want to follow it. Rather, it may not be required by state statute, but because it's something that we've passed and we've adopted, I don't want to be arbitrary and capricious by not following it. That being said, I think that policy does need some revision, some updating, and maybe services. This is not the first time I think that this issue has come up where it's difficult to find a qualified person, that maybe that particular aspect is something we could amend right away.
And that's the issue, finding a qualified person before five other people hire him. Secondarily, how old is this resolution, or this resolution that was adopted?
Several years.
So in my opinion, those old resolutions aren't binding on the current commission. I meant to say this on this other deal because there is some Wyoming case that says commissioners from previous earthly times can't control all the future commissioners for the next 50 years. They just can't do it.
There is, there's some exceptions to that, however, as far as binding.
So I would like to see a-
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Mill.
Heather, in this, in our current policy, is, as we have in other policies for like board members and stuff, is there mention in there where we can potentially not, you know, make an exception for the policy?
There are, although, and I wish I had brought it with me, it's pretty brief. I think, you know, that's typically if you have a sole source issue where you can only acquire certain goods or services from one particular source.
Or there's another part to it. I can't remember exactly what's-
I can't either. So potentially, yes. But certainly, if the board would like, we could take, I could take a stab at amending this, this policy and getting it to you for the next meeting so that, it definitely needs some work.
Right. I was just wondering, it seems like, if I remember right, we might be able to use that second verbiage. I can't remember what size exactly in order to apply to this.
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to interject and maybe Ms. Kinder would like to weigh in on this. Is it the case that the Detrona County Health Department's procurement policy has a higher threshold?
Yes, we do.
Could you speak to that?
Yes, we do have a higher amount, just due to the fact that we were recognizing, we were following county policies on procurement and recognizing that we weren't able to do some of the things that we needed to. So the Board of Health did increase that, and I want to say to 150,000, but I am not absolutely positive of that amount. But I know it's more than 50,000.
I'd just like to know the date of the proposal and I can tell you where I think they were at that point in time, because 50,000 10 years ago is 150 now. So, and I do believe that we probably should assemble some of these policies that you've put forth to us and have a meeting concerning those and what kind of revisions you might recognize that would be better suited for today's commission.
Certainly. Commissioner Laird, I think, my recollection is maybe 2014, 2015. So it's been several years.
So that'd put it at?
That'd put it at least 100,000 today, so.
Heather, how long would it take to put a contract together? I mean, if we're doing this, I know that would have, that'd have to go to the top of your list and stuff like that, so.
A contract?
Well, an RFP.
Okay. An RFP for, I could certainly-
For a rep.
Do it as quickly as possible.
For an owner's rep on something like this.
This is easier because we're not dealing with an EJ CDC-
Sure.
...requirements and specifications, as far as I'm aware anyway. So I think we could go more quickly.
So how, what is more quickly?
We could certainly try to get it done in a couple of weeks.
Okay.
Thank you. A unique situation is a circumstance, fluctuating cost for the service material project, a specific limited timeframe the purchase is needed. Those are the-
Ms. Chairman, it seems to me that two or more of those would apply in this circumstance. And it also seems to me that this is a meeting being livestreamed, the media, some of the media is here today. You know, we'd encourage applicants who may be qualified to provide these types of professional services, but I think really, timing is the, is a real key issue here.
I'd agree with the time constraint in order to get this project moving forward so we don't have another lodge. Would be great. Whatever we can do to get this going and stay within our policy would be the best option, but we are under time constraints. We are under time constraints. Right now, the clock is ticking. We need to do something for those funds, for this project.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with you. Mr. Mill, this is one of those projects and some of these policies that I hear hamstrings the current commission and I think that we ought to visit those and I think we ought to hire somebody that can do this job as quickly as we can.
Heather?
So if the direction is to put an RFP together as quickly as possible, I can certainly do that unless the commission is finding that you want to, an exception to the bid process.
So are we making an exception to the policy the way it stands right now by doing this?
We, I believe that we would be, yes. There's a provision for an emergency. I don't know if this would qualify, but that portion says if an unanticipated or emergency circumstance occurs where a county office needs to make immediate repairs, I guess this is probably not applicable, but I'll finish it anyway. The county office may select goods and/or services based on the availability of a qualified provider of the goods and/or services required for immediate repair. We just, this policy doesn't give you a lot of latitude, I guess. Yeah.
So the question that, the question that we're being asked though, is it to select somebody today, you know, look at the different ones or to allow Health Department to make that choice? What are we being asked here? I guess I'm sorry, lost. I apologize.
I believe we're asking, due to the fact that we have three, that the executive committee would interview the three candidates and if we received others, of course, add them into the list. But the executive committee consists of two board members, Commissioner Nicolason, Tom Poplick, myself. And so I think that's what we're asking. And Jared? Yep. So asking permission that the executive committee do the interviews for that.
I guess the question I have, Heather, is that can we go off of their policies? Or is this something that has to come off of the county policy when making these decisions?
I, some, I think my take on it, and Jared, if you feel differently, let me know, is because the county is the owner, we felt that the county policy is probably the applicable one.
So then a follow-up question to that, if it's going to take two weeks putting an RFP together, but if we are clearly behind the times and where that policy should be, would it make more sense to maybe do an RFP but update that policy in the same amount of time? If we update that policy and it then fits within what the amounts here are, I know it puts it off two weeks, but if it, I want to do it right. I don't want anybody to come back and say that we just changed the, we went around the policy to make something happen. Can we review and fix that policy within that timeframe?
Within a couple of weeks?
Yeah.
I think so. Yes.
So you're suggesting, Mr. Chairman, that we amend the policy to bring it up to the current standards at $100,000? She can prepare a resolution, we can vote on that?
Well, I think that we bring that policy up to date on, no matter what the amount is. If it ended up being $60,000. But we have several policies within this county that need to be updated and are completely out of whack.
True.
So if we research into it tomorrow and find out that it's not even going to hit this, then I say we move forward with an RFP. While still updating the policy.
The policy's nine years old. And so $50,000 nine years ago isn't the same today. It just isn't. You can figure that out somewhere on some chart, I'm sure.
And then maybe the larger discussion is whether you want a procurement policy. You're not, I mean, with certain exceptions, you are not, you don't have to have one. You don't have to have one for services. You don't have to have one for a lot of the purchases that the county makes, you know, dependent on the source of the funds. You know, on the one hand, you may want that for uniformity and to take away any type of favoritism or anything like that, but it definitely slows you down as far as being able to do things quickly and get projects done.
Yeah. I think we want to do away with favoritism and we want to be fair to everybody who's qualified to do the job. I think, I kind of sense that, that's what the chairman's saying and I agree with that. Now, I guess if we want to amend the policy, that's done by a vote of the commissioners, true. Now do we have to do that in a public meeting?
Yes.
So we could set the public meeting up as soon as possible and we can discuss this and see what we might want to do and then have a vote, right? And we can probably do all that in what, a month?
Or two weeks.
So that's good for me. I mean, the other commissioners agreed to it. It's certainly agreeable to me to do it that way.
So I guess, for clarification, Mr. Chairman, I suppose that tonight's meeting, we could vote on changing 2-2.1.1 request for bids so that it deleted the words "and/or services" from the request for bids. And then the policy could be developed over time. Could we not do that tonight?
Yes, you could.
And then we could do, we could go that route. The other thing is, I do think this is sole source purchase scenario for this particular service in that examples are a unique situation and a specific limited timeframe the purchase is needed. And we're very clear on the timeframe, the limited timeframe we have. So I think we could invite two or three or four people to make a proposal and then select one of them without going through an RFP process and without advertising. I think it's, that would be preferable to me at least.
So I'm not trying to kill this. However, a sole source generally means one person can provide it, not four people that can come in and provide the same service and it's no longer a sole source.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Mill.
I believe the time, like I said, stated before, the timeframe, we're on the clock already with this. If we can, if it's legal, if we're good with just making a text amendment and redacting that portion of that policy, if we can do that tonight, then I'm fine with it, whatever, and we can move forward. I think it flies in, I think though, that we should have a policy. I think that policy should reflect all the entities that may be under, come under the county's policy at some point in possible time. So we'd need to work with the Health Department, the library, that, you know, everybody that may have a purchasing policy. And if, you know, everybody's at 50, but Health Department's at 100, then we need to come in at or just above their policy. Otherwise, we're just spinning our wheels like we were. Those smaller boards should be more restrictive than we are. But we can't violate the state statute either. So if the state statute says 50,000 or whatever for, for not services, but for products, then that's what we have to be. And we just omit services maybe. I don't know. But we need to be, stay within statute, be uniform across the county and do whatever. But I'm okay with changing it today if that's what we need to do to get this project moving.
Mr. Chairman.
Get it moving.
Mr. Chairman, I think that we should get this done right. And if that takes two weeks, it takes two weeks. I don't want to pass something just to get it passed. I want to get it right the first time around so it doesn't come around and bite us later on. And if we're going to do it, I don't have any problem with changing it. But that doesn't mean that you can't interview people during this process time while you're waiting. You just can't award anything at that point in time. But after that point, if we have the change in the resolution at that point in time, then that opens it up that we can look at that and change that point. You aren't agreeing to anything. You aren't signing a contract with anybody. All you're doing is interviewing them at that point in time. There's a lot of times that you interview people well before you negotiate a price or sign a contract with them. I don't see any difference with that. If we're going to look at this and we can change this and we can vote on it, we can have it out there and we can make sure that it's done right, that's what I would prefer to do and then bring this forth in the next meeting. Because I'm with Steve. I do not want to look like we're picking and choosing on this. I want everything to be right out in the open. I want to be clear. And I don't want anybody to say that we're picking favorites for one reason or another. So that's my two cents on that.
So, Mr. Chairman, and just to clarify, looking at, Jared was good enough to bring this up for us to look at, we have to publish for not less than two weeks. So as I mentioned, it'd probably take us a couple of weeks to get the RFP put together, ready to publish, then two weeks, setting a deadline for proposals to be submitted. And so I, I mean, it's a fairly lengthy process.
So, Mr. Chairman, I need to understand something legally. The statute doesn't require us to do this for services?
No, there's no statute that requires the county to put a bid out for services. This is an internal policy that the county-
So do you think that's a good policy to have this policy?
I think that it, I mean, I think that it can be. I think it makes it difficult in a situation like this, however, when every, when time is of the essence.
Well, I can certainly see everybody's statements about this. Now, the thing that I truly wouldn't want to do is interview a bunch of people first and then stumble block later on something and they, somebody comes in and says, "We already interviewed these people and you showed favoritism." So I do want to give every person that's interested in this job, that's in Wyoming at least, a chance to get it if they want to apply for it. I don't want to, I don't want to have a deal where some guy comes and says, "Boy, I sure would have loved that job and it's highly qualified and didn't even get a shot at it." So, but I do think this, we have to legally go with what the policy is right now.
Yes.
We have to do that.
Yes, Mr. Commissioner.
So until that's changed, Mr. Nicolason, I'm not sure we can do anything else, can we? If we, we can't disregard it, I think.
Mr. Chairman. So is, or am I hearing that county legal can propose, draft and provide us before the next deadline, before the next meeting? So that would be the Wednesday-ish before the 18th? A amended, a proposed amended procurement policy, which either may do a couple of different things. things. It may raise the amount for professional services, it may delete professional services, but it'll give us, Commissioner North was suggesting, give us time to look at that and think about it and sleep on it. And then, on the 18th, maybe adopt a revised policy that then allows us to not do an RFP for professional services in this matter. And so conceivably, on the 18th, if the amended procurement policy is passed, adopted by this commission, then we can, we in the Health Department Committee can move forward with these interviews without doing the full-blown RFP, full-blown advertising, and at least six to eight week process.
That is the way I understand it, and I'd prefer it be done that way, personally, because I think by just taking something out tonight, you're redoing your policy, and it's not a complete redo of the policy. I'd rather look at the whole thing because you haven't even addressed the value. So I think that just taking this timeframe and getting, going through it, revising it, getting in line where it should be today, and then we vote on it, and then we can move forward at the next meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I'm comfortable with that. What I would really like to do, I wouldn't, I'm not sure I'm sold on removing services completely, because I think, let's say you had a higher sum attorney and it was $200,000, and that's a pretty good deal, and we'd have a lot of firms that might bid that. So I would like to just adopt a change in the amount because that is a 10-year-old resolution. I think it's outdated, and I think we can scientifically take a look at how that's changed and bring it up to today's standards, and we'll accomplish all the same things.
I would just ask, could we just review the whole policy as a whole and bring forward any changes you see fit?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, with regard to Health Department and the building, we also have, I think, a need to, we have, we need clarification on whether the committee would enter into a contract with a geotech company or whether that agreement or agreements of that nature, you know, come to this board or how that's going to be handled moving forward. Because I think there'll be, not a lot of them, but there might be some that are like this, that aren't huge deals but are part of this and need to keep moving forward. So thoughts on, and direction on how the Health Department Committee is supposed to handle that?
Well, is it truly their job or our job? I need to get straightened out on that.
So, Mr. Chairman, with the, just as an example, the geotechnical engineering, would that, would they not be contracting with the engineer or the contractor or?
No, it was excluded from the architect scope services. So that's why I said, there won't be a lot of these, but there could be a few of them for liability reasons and, I think, industry practice. That was specifically omitted.
Okay, thank you. I wasn't aware of that.
Sure. Mr. Nicolason, do we have an estimate or idea, wild guess, of how much?
I thought we had a number, and I'm trying to recall what, I'd like a rough number.
It was like $450,000, if I remember right, for the geotech. It was pretty high.
I don't think we've actually asked someone for a specific number. Whether we have a ballpark, I'm not sure.
Looks like Brankton has it.
What?
$19.
One, nine, nineteen.
For the geotech?
You're on $380,000.
I must have read the wrong thing. It's been a long week.
If it's that amount, then I'm not really sure we need to be too concerned about it.
So, and you'll maybe recall that.
We could just handle it ourselves, however, or have Health handle it.
Yeah, so with the Library, on the, recently, they entered, they selected and entered into the agreement for the, was it the fire alarm system? And then we wrote the check. And so it's really just trying to clarify what the process is going to be on items of this nature.
That would be good, because I didn't, I understood we approved that kind of thing, but if we don't, we don't.
That seems to be the most efficient way, referencing, like you said, the Library. You guys do it, and then we'll, you know, since it doesn't go over that threshold, that would be my thought. We just take care of the check.
That's if our liaison comes to us and says, "We should approve it or not approve it," is what I would say.
Yes, that will probably happen.
If they're rogue and they've gone crazy on you, Peter, I hope you tell us.
Owners rep is the last, I'm sorry, not owners rep. Commissioning agent's the last one. I think we have a little time on that, but I think we're also trying to decide if one of our current employees, Tom Popolick, can provide that service due to his familiarity and his expertise in this exact kind of thing. So I think that's a conversation that doesn't need to happen or get finalized today, but we'll need to figure out the commissioning agent in the months to come. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, last comment real quick on the policy. Again, I just, my thought is, make sure, if we keep the services in, if we don't, I'd prefer to keep them in at whatever level, but whatever that level is, please reach out to the other boards and see if they have one.
Okay.
And be above their level on that. That way, we don't have this problem.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
And Christie.
It doesn't move. Everybody tries to make it move and it doesn't move. All right, so I want to be real quick today. In our review of our current subdivision regulations, it came to light that we have, from the Development Department, presented two subtext amendments in the past, in 2021 and 2022. Both of those text amendments went through the full process of going in front of, being publicized, going in front of the P and Z, and going in front of the Board. The Board made a motion and voted to approve those, and the resolutions just never got filed. So what I'm presenting today are the two separate resolutions that would reflect both of those actions from September 7th, 2021, and June 21st of 2022.
Commissioner Nicolason.
Mr. Chairman, Christie, thanks. I've looked at these and, for the most part, don't have any concerns. The one question, and I think it's in part a question for our legal department, there is a deletion of the requirement of a public hearing for the county commissioners from some of this, if I recall. So there's a planning and zoning public hearing, but then there's the deletion of a requirement for a public hearing by the county commissioners. Do you want me to pull that up, or?
It's Section 4. It's right here on Exhibit 8, because I read that same thing, and I, yeah, that's exactly what it said, and that's one thing that I was going to bring up.
Was it in the 2021 or 2022?
I have no idea.
Okay.
Our stuff is not real convenient to read through.
So I'll find it in a minute, but I think the question is.
Section F, if I remember right. Section 6F is, that was what it was in one of the locations, so.
Sorry. So my question is, number one, is it legal for us to dispense with the requirement that we, as a county commission, have a public hearing? And number two, if it is legal to do so, is it the right thing to do? Meaning, are we abdicating some of our responsibility to P and Z by not having a hearing ourselves? So here, it's in Chapter 2, Section 2, and it's in a couple of other places, but it's one of the Page 7s of the subdivision.
And I read the same thing, and I agree. I think it's a major mistake for us to relegate our responsibility to an unelected board, to an appointed board, and taking that away from the citizens of the county to not hear their complaints or their support for any specific project. And I think that's one thing that I, I don't think that we should take that out. You know, I don't think we should remove that.
So, Mr. Chairman. So it's Chapter 2, Section 2, public hearing requirements, is that the correct?
That's the one they're looking at. I think if you go down to F on that one, on page 8, it's in that same section, and it says that the Board of County Commissioners shall, that's where we took it out, approve or disapprove the subdivision application and issue.
Yeah, basically, everything is stretched out. I believe that we need to leave in there. And same thing with the next paragraph down right below that. I think that ought to be left in also.
Well, it's exactly the wording you'd want in. Conduct a public hearing is provided by law.
What you missed?
Now, if there isn't one provided by law, then that's another issue. But if it's provided by law, you do it. Let's see.
So Christie, these may have been done before your time. I don't know if you have any thoughts or comments. My recollection from practicing law in front of the city was that we had applicants had public hearings in front of both, the Planning and Zoning Commission and the City Council. I think there are both political and potentially legal reasons for doing that, so you can kind of hear in my voice the concern with taking it out. But I think I've said all that I can say on it.
Excuse me. There's several things that I think could be worded better, and there are things that I don't agree with at all in here, and I'm not saying you did it. I don't know where it came from. It's just like saying that you have to merge with an adjacent improvement district. I disagree with that 100% because if you have a small subdivision that's already been there, that has their own improvement district, and suddenly they put a big one right next to it, maybe they don't want to be part of that group. You know, that's, I'm just trying to look at the, we all want, anyway, we all want to be left alone. And I think it's important that we need to do, let subdivisions do that. I don't have any problem with requesting that they have their own improvement district or set it up. Now, I know that's been a real pain as far as seeing it through and making sure, but I think we're doing our due diligence by starting that and doing that instead of trying to make them merge into some other district that they may not want to be part of, or the other district doesn't want any part of them.
I, Mr. Chairman, I don't disagree with you, Mr. North, at all. What we were trying to do is capture the items that had previously been presented, that had previously had motions and approvals on, in order to reflect them correctly in our current version so that we can then move forward to make other necessary amendments, which was the motivation for verifying that we had everything logged and tracked. And so up to 2019, I can find all the resolutions and all the movements, but through '21 and '22, I could not find the resolutions. And so we just went through the steps of researching what those proposals were. This is what those text amendments that were voted upon would reflect. And if we need to go back and make more text amendments, I'm more than happy to go back and do that.
I'm glad this didn't get filed, because I'm glad it didn't get filed, because there's a lot of stuff in here that is a mess. It's like in Chapter 3, it says legal access to a public street. Well, that should just say, a legal easement has to be established to the subdivision. That takes care of that, because there may not be a public street that's right there close, but there may be a legal access. If they get a legal access through a private, on a private road or something else, that's all we need to make sure that they do have legal access before they go in there and do that. So there's several, I'm not, I'm not, I'm just saying, I would like to look through this more and sit down and talk about some of the stuff that's been redlined and why we need it or why we don't.
So, Mr. Chairman, at this point, how do we move forward, Heather, with?
So, Mr. Chairman, so Christie, these are things, we don't have a signed resolution that was never recorded in the county clerk's office.
Correct.
But it was approved at a meeting.
Correct.
So I guess we have to figure out whether, what the status of these are. Yeah, if we didn't comply with the, with WAPA, then these may be of no effect, and it kind of sounds like that's maybe what happened.
And you've listened to these meetings, then? You've listened to the approval take place?
I did.
Okay. Well, then I think what we need to do is follow up on these and see whether or not they were signed off on and filed. If not, then.
Then yeah, if these changes have not been made, then whatever we had previously will be the binding regulations, and then we can work on making the amendments that you all feel are appropriate.
The thing I'm concerned about, Mr. Chairman, is I don't see how they would have even considered taking language out of here that gave the, if the statute gave the commissioners the authority or maybe obligation to have these hearings, because when I was on the City Council, the zoning and planning, if they overruled something, the people appealed it then to the City Council. I was on separate of those hearings. And then a lot of times, we would create an ordinance so like the guy could have a higher fence if he had a, wanted to put a fence up. And we did that, I don't know, numerous times. So I don't think, when I looked at that, I thought, why would anybody vote for that? Why would the commissioners vote to not even follow the statute? I think it's a mistake. I think there was so much in that document, and I think we should probably start looking at that document a lot closer to see all really what does need to be straightened out that was never really intended by the commissioners who voted for it even. Because I can tell you, when I listened to that one Planning and Zoning Commission hearing, those guys were calling for a clean version of that so they could read it and see what was in it. They never got it.
Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Mills.
Moving back to the subdivision regulations, though, I don't see how we can basically look at any of this until we actually have a, have. Until we actually have the recorded document, or if it's not been recorded, then we can, then we can move forward from there, but until we have something actually, a legal document.
So, Mr. Chairman, the last resolution that was located was from the 2019 version.
So for some reason then this was dropped or forgotten or they decided not to do it? Nobody knows.
So then we revert back to the 2019. Okay.
I mean, we, we can try to make sure of that, but that's my feeling, yes. Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thanks for waiting.
Yeah.
Quick out of order.
Okay, county attorney. Do you have anything for us tonight or?
I have, one, one matter I would like to discuss in executive session if possible would be for the purposes of potential litigation.
Okay.
Other than that, I don't really have anything outside of that to update you.
Is there any report on the bankruptcy and where that's heading with our liquor license?
So I think Jared and I have talked about that. He's, he has more familiarity about the circumstances and so we're going to work together on the, the motion that we need to file. He's not admitted in the federal court, so I'll have to, I am, so.
And then we don't know whether the, I don't know if the other commissioners knew this, that Mr. Winship filed a motion for rehearing of the Supreme Court decision.
And it was, it was denied.
Oh, it was denied? I figured they denied that, huh.
Okay, so do I have a motion to go out of work, the work session into an executive session for the purposes of potential litigation?
I'll make a motion that we go in, out of the work session and move into executive session for the purposes of litigation for legal purposes.
Moved by Commissioner North, second by Commissioner Millen. Any discussion?